Welcome to the Monday, June the ninth, two thousand and twenty-five Township Board Trustees Meet. Do you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here. We'll open up our first item of business to public comment. If you're here to make a comment about any issue, you can come up to the microphone, the podium on my right, your left, and we'll give you three minutes to speak on whatever it is you'd like to address to the Board of Trustees. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and move for consideration of our consent agenda, item number two.
I'd like to remove payroll and vouchers from the consent agenda.
Okay, understand, and we'll make that item number three A. And is there any other item? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes six to nothing. And then we'll move into item number three, Police Department Introductions, presented by our Chief James Gallagher. And I think, is that Dan Brown on your heels there?
There he is.
Join our Captain Dan Brown. Welcome, gentlemen.
Which one do you want to see as the mayor?
I think I'll do this one because I can see.
That one, yes.
There you go.
There we go. Test, test. Okay, good. Well, welcome. Here we are, celebrating seven new hires again. I feel like we're doing this frequently in the last couple of weeks, but tonight's for their families as well. So as we've stated in the past, one, thank you for letting us come tonight before the Board to introduce our new seven officers. Seven's a lot, but it's replacing the five hundred and twenty years of service we've lost over the last, you know, three and a half years. We're going to start off with Officer Eric Rockwell, badge number three fifty-six. Come on up, Eric. He's getting used to the uniform again. You can stand over with Dan. Yeah, we won't make you stand right in front. So Eric grew up in Howell, Michigan, where he's a graduate of Howell High School in two thousand and eight. Again, I say this every time, but man, I'm starting to feel old. He graduated from Ferris State, go Bulldogs, in two thousand thirteen, where he earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He then attended Mott Community College Police Academy and graduated there in two thousand and nineteen. He worked in Novi for four years before joining our team on June second of this year. They just graduated a week ago Friday, right?
They did, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. He was one of the entire then. The other six graduated. Sorry, Eric, I threw you right in there, but I'm just trying to make you a little younger. Eric's married to his wife Brittany, and they have two young children. So we're excited to have Eric here. He brings a wealth of knowledge from Novi. He was part of their rifle instructor team and had some other opportunities presenting himself before he left there for a moment to take care of some family matters. So we're excited to have him here, and I'm going to let you introduce your family if they're here.
Okay. Right there is my dad, Edward Rockwell, his wife, Yeva, and her mom, Olga, right over there.
All right. So, welcome. Eric, you look much better in a Bloomfield Township. Where's badge three fifty-seven? Where's Tyah? There he is. I'm going to get, I'm going to pronounce your last name right, too, I think.
That's the first one I get.
Yeah, no, Taras. I'm good here. I should have, I should have Director Cece here. I should introduce Director Cece while he's sitting there. Director Cece is the Director of the Oakland Police Academy, and I will give you credit, sir, that he is the reason why Oakland Police Academy is what it is to our agencies. He fights for local law enforcement in our region, and there's some really, really good things happening at the Oakland Police Academy over the next year, year and a half, two years, that will only improve the quality of candidates and improve the officers that we have within our agencies because of that partnership. So, Dave, welcome. So, Taras, right?
Yes, sir. Whatever you say.
Thronson? No. Did I do it?
You got it.
All right, badge three fifty-seven. He grew up in Ukraine, came to the U.S. at age thirteen. He's a graduate of Brandon High School in two thousand and fourteen. He graduated from University of Maryland Baltimore County in two thousand and eighteen, where he then enlisted in the ROTC program. After college, he joined the Army, where he was commissioned as a second lieutenant. He spent eight years in the Army. He climbed the ranks, earned several medals, the Army Achievement Medal, National Defense Medal, Global War on Terrorism Medal. He also earned multiple service ribbons. Kind of looks like some of the other people that walk around here. He left the Army in two thousand and twenty-four as an Army captain, and he's a recent graduate of the one hundred and thirtieth class of the Oakland Police Academy, and he also joined our team on June second of this year. So I'm going to let you introduce the family.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I am a terrible public speaker, so first and foremost, I wanted just to appreciate and say thank you to the township officials, to Chief Gallagher, and to Captain Brown, of course. And I'm not sure why Director Cece let me graduate, but I'm here, so hopefully I won't let you guys down or disappoint you. Looking forward to the FTO program. Thank you again.
Thank you. Here's your work idea. Eric, that's all right. We gave you something today. Welcome. You're official.
Congratulations. Glad to have you.
Jeremy, come on up. Now we're at badge three fifty-eight, which is kind of just crazy. Bob, pretty soon they're going to have a hundred under you. Mr. Sutton, he grew up in Highland, Michigan. He's a graduate of Milford High School in two thousand and seven. Found your new friend. He attended Oakland Community College and graduated from Michigan State University in two thousand and fourteen, where he studied criminal justice. He also holds a master's degree from MSU in law enforcement intel and analysis. He served in the U.S. Marine Corps for five years and received the following medals: Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, along with multiple other service ribbons. He recently worked for General Motors before pursuing a career in law enforcement, which we're glad you did. He is married to his wife, Sarah, and he also joined our agency and is a graduate of the one hundred and thirtieth class of the Oakland Police Academy. I think we, did we at least, though the state of Michigan helped us, but did we at least finance half the class? I think there were sixty-six graduates, which is, that's a large class, and they've just maxed out, I think, the next class coming up. Is that correct? Yeah. Which is a big deal for us. I'm going to let you introduce, if you have any family members here.
Hi, and my wife, Sarah.
All right. Welcome. Officer Slasky, come on up. Justin grew up in Macomb, Michigan. He's a graduate of Lutheran High North in two thousand and nineteen. Went on to attend Northwood University and then graduated from Oakland University in May of two thousand and twenty-three. He most recently worked at Ally Financial before leaving to pursue a career in law enforcement, so we're getting some good diversity within the workforce. He's also a graduate of the one hundred and thirtieth class of the Oakland Police Academy, again, just a couple of weeks ago, and he joined our team on June second as well. So, Justin, welcome, and you can actually get in the building now.
I got a big family here. My uncle Ross in the front, my mom, my sister and her fiancee, Daniel, my aunt Stephanie, my cousin Kara, all come out to support with this. I'm thankful for them and for you guys.
Thank you. You'll hear me say all the time, they're the ones that make the true sacrifice. Eric, come on up. Eric Garcia, badge three sixty. He's a homegrown product, we like to call it, right? He's a graduate of Bloomfield High School. He grew up here in Bloomfield Township, graduated Bloomfield Hills High School in two thousand and nineteen, then went on to Western Michigan University, pursued a degree in criminal justice, and graduated there in April of two thousand and twenty-four. He worked many part-time jobs throughout high school in the summertime to help fund his college. He also graduated recently at the one hundred and thirtieth class of the Oakland Police Academy, and that's a theme for the rest of the time. He also started on June second, which, we put those dates because it's important for us, one, to be on record with them, and, two, we've never hired this many officers at one time. So, Eric, we're excited to have you.
My mom, my dad, Kimberly and Vince Garcia, my sister Gigi's out here, and then my girlfriend, me and her mom Judy, and thank you guys for the support.
Austin, come on up. We're at badge three sixty-one. There we go. Austin Miller, he grew up in Bellevue, Michigan. He's a graduate of Bellevue High School in two thousand and twenty, went on to Saginaw Valley State University, and graduated in May of two thousand and twenty-four, again with a degree in criminal justice. He most recently worked at United Wholesale Mortgage before leaving to pursue a career in law enforcement. Sounds like our detective bureau should be worried about some financial crime detectives. Austin is married to his wife Molly, who is a pediatric nurse, and he also graduated the one hundred and thirtieth class of the Oakland Police Academy. So, Austin, I'm going to let you introduce your family.
My wife Molly's here. That's it.
By the way, that's plenty. That's plenty. There's Emma. Emma, come on up. Emma Draper, badge three sixty-two. She grew up in Linden, Michigan, is a graduate of Linden High School in two thousand and sixteen. She attended Mott Community College, where she earned an associate degree in general studies, and then a graduate, and then graduated from Saginaw Valley State University with a degree in criminal justice. Emma worked as a loss prevention officer while in college, as well as a few other jobs to help pay for her schooling. She also has probably been in our process a long time. She applied with us.
Last May, right?
Probably last May, knowing that she was going to graduate with all the openings, and we kept in good contact with her to maintain, and she did a lot of ride-alongs. As a matter of fact, she did a ride-along with Officer Scott recently, where they were involved in a foot pursuit, and when I pulled up to the scene, she just looked at me like if it was only like a month later I could have been involved, right? She was raring to go.
Excited.
Yeah, so she got some good experience. She also graduated recently from the Oakland Police Academy, and we're excited to have you finally. In uniform.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I just want to thank the township and thank Captain Brown and Chief Gallagher, thank Director Cece, and thank my parents. So, my parents met Becky and my Draper.
As I said, don't forget that. And so they, this, the last week and then this week, they're in a two-week administrative period, where they kind of go through our policy procedures, get all their certifications and our defensive tactics, and kind of just learn how to wear that new uniform. Only Eric really knows how that feels. And then they'll start their seventeen, eighteen-week training period in their FTO program, which is pretty extensive training. They'll learn on-the-job experience in each phase, more percentage of the work is, workload is put on them. So they'll start off doing zero to twenty percent of the work, and then Phase Two, they'll move to twenty-five to thirty to forty, all the way up until their last phase. And so, all goes well, they'll all be solo patrol officers about October-ish. So, we continue to grow, we continue to have a generational turnover in our agency, but we're excited, and that's what keeps us young. Congratulations, Chief, and welcome. We're so glad to have you on board, and I think when you talk about badge numbers, I think, what would be the top badge number, about three sixty-something with the new recruits? Well, with three sixty-two is where we're at right now. Three sixty-two, and then the oldest serving would be Cook with, what, one sixty-nine, I think, right now? Cook and Paul Schwab, I think, are our two, I don't want to say oldest, most experienced. They're both retired, but they both work in the village, so one sixty-nine, one ninety-one. Right, and they've had wonderful careers. So we want to all wish you the best and know that we're here to support you any way we can. Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. Thanks, Chief. Okay, we'll move to item three A, approved for payroll and vouchers. Mark, you had a comment on that?
Yeah, I do. My concern on payroll and vouchers is related to township cash flow and whether or not the proper amount of funds are in the right spot to meet expense needs. Our revenue for public safety is primarily collected at the end of the financial year. This raises questions, are there sufficient funds available to meet ongoing expenses for roughly ten months prior to the tax revenue collection? To illustrate the issue, for the financial year ending in two thousand and twenty-four, public safety expenses totaled thirty-three million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. On a pro-rata monthly basis, this equates to approximately twenty-eight million, ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars spent in the first ten months. In addition, there were transfers out of central, out for central services fees. Those occur at the end of the six-month, three million, two hundred and ninety thousand, and pension bond debts, which occur in May and November, four million, two, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-six thousand. This brings the estimated total public safety fund expense and transfers for the first ten months for the financial year ending in two thousand and twenty-four to about thirty-five million, four hundred and fifteen thousand, and seventy-six dollars. Given the starting fund balance of that year was fourteen million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, this would result in a negative balance at the end of ten months of about twenty-one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And I've been asking the Board where the money comes from to meet the obligations, especially with respect to the approved transfers from the general fund to public safety. This is significantly higher than that amount. And are the general funds sufficient to cover the shortfall, if there is one? And so I still really don't understand that. We don't have that information being provided to the residents. And lastly, Dirk Beckerleck, during a previous meeting, stated that the, even if additional funds are required throughout the year, the, after we collect the tax revenue, the balances can be adjusted downward, but we don't even have that information in the quarterly reports. So therefore, I'll be voting no on payroll and vouchers.
All right. Thank you, Mark. All right, so having said that, is there a motion to approve three A?
And having said that, over the years, somehow, we've never missed a payroll, we've never missed paying our bills. And with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Excuse me, Neil. I've never said that we haven't paid our bills. What I've stated is, is there enough funds in public safety to meet the requirement?
There is. There obviously is. And let's wait till the Treasurers here can help answer your questions.
Okay. Well, and again, the quarterly reports don't reflect that, and then the approved payments coming out by the Board, appropriations for the fund transfers, don't meet those obligations, especially at the end of the third quarter.
So also, I mean, wait till the Treasurers here hopefully can answer your questions, and also, as we've all indicated in the past, you have some of these questions ahead of time. Meet with the Finance Director, who's really a great person to meet with and answer some of these questions, and so that when you come here, you have more of a comfort level to come to.
I did ask this question a few weeks ago when we approved seven million in capital transfers to the capital improvement fund. So, well, my questions haven't changed, Neil.
No, I know, and I think it's a nice idea, Mark. If you'd like to make an appointment with Jason Tice, our Finance Director, maybe he can help explain it to you. And I could also ask for a written response for you that we could post on the website as well.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, we will be happy to do it. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number four, consider approval of our vehicle customization contract for incident command vehicle presented by our Fire Chief, John Leroy. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. I've come to you with a little bit different request tonight. Our command vehicle is in need of replacement. Part of the process is the Ford Transit that is being replaced with is already here, is part of the last year's fiscal year, it's already been purchased. So now we need to customize it as a custom build-out, the interior, the lighting, and graphics for it. We did an extensive and exhaustive search, starting with a company out of Florida that was part of the Sourcewell Cooperative Bid Program. That company was very slow in the giving of information, not providing complete information as we requested, so we decided to move another direction away from the group purchasing program. Another thing as part of this is we decided to, we wanted to try to use a local company because last time this was done, fifteen years ago, being a one-hundred percent custom project, there was a lot of questions that needed to be answered and reviewed on-site, and there was multiple trips to Ohio when this was done last time, and it was done by multiple different manufacturers instead of just one place. So we were trying to get it all under one umbrella and decided to go a route of three local manufacturers, and we submitted requests for proposals from them. Creative Solutions out of Troy, Kentucky Trailer, which is out of Wixom, and Canfield Equipment Services out of Warren, were all looked at heavily. They all came on-site and looked at our existing command vehicle and our plans that we had submitted to them, and they decided to incorporate bids for that. Canfield out of Warren decided not to submit a proposal back due to the fact that they just didn't feel that they could meet the scope and what our needs were. The two groups that submitted proposals were Kentucky Trailer and Creative Solutions Group. Both of them took our existing architecture, what we did design, incorporated all the technology features that we had asked for, including lighting, graphics packages, and everything like that. And Creative Solutions came back at one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three. Kentucky Trailer came back at two hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven. So my recommendation is that we move forward with a contract with Creative Solutions Group for one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Chief. All right, item number five, present and discuss initiative to consolidate precincts and to collaborate with the county on absentee county board. Katerina Yankee, our election specialist. Welcome, Katerina.
Great, thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Katerina Yankee, and I'm the election specialist in Clerk Brooks' office. Although two thousand and twenty-five is not an election year, we always have elections on our mind in our office. And something we've been thinking a lot about this year is how we can make elections more cost-effective and how we can improve them for our residents. So tonight, I'm going to tell you a little bit about our ideas. We're not asking for any action tonight. We're just sort of giving you some information. If you need more detail, this is going to be sort of a broad overview. There are more details in the packet, and I will also be available in the office to answer any additional questions. So this is what we are proposing. The first is to consolidate our precincts, and the second is to partner with Oakland County to pre-process our absentee ballots. Both of these proposals are in alignment with changes in state law, and these recommendations are guided by our resident voting trends and some feedback we received from our election workers, who are also township residents, and our meeting with the Election Commission. So what is precinct consolidation, and why would we want to consolidate our precincts? So, precinct consolidation is where we take our existing precinct map and we're able to redraw our precinct boundaries to create less precincts. Back in two thousand and twenty-two, voters passed Proposal Two, which gave us early voting. We all remember that one. But not a lot of people remember that. Along with that, it increased our precinct boundary sizes. So it took our existing precincts of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine active voters, and it increased the size to four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine active voters. Now, the thinking behind this was that our voters are going to utilize other methods of voting, early voting, absentee ballots, and with that, there is less of a need for so many polling locations on Tuesday, Election Day. Now, I said this happened in two thousand and twenty-two, so you're all thinking, why now? Why two thousand and twenty-five? Well, we didn't want to just jump right into something so big, and so we decided to take a beat and analyze how our voters reacted to early voting, and we saw that they really liked it. And one of the biggest pieces of data that we were able to pull from this is that our voters showed a thirty-five percent decline in election day voter turnout from November of two thousand and twenty-two to November of two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to remind everyone that twenty-two was a gubernatorial election, twenty-four was a presidential election. You'd expect a really big increase, but in fact, it was different, a decline because of early voting. This here is a draft of our new precinct map. We are going from eighteen precincts down to twelve, so this is what it's looking like now. And you'll see there on the right-hand side is a list of all of our potential polling location, as well as three backup polling locations that we have listed in case of an emergency. Now, procedurally, the Election Commission votes on the new precinct boundaries, and the Board of Trustees will approve the polling locations. There are tons of benefits for precinct consolidations. The first, you can see visually up there, is going to be a decrease in staffing costs. We're estimating about a twenty-five percent decrease in staffing costs for elections with twelve precincts instead of eighteen. And there are numerous benefits for our residents as well. So you'll see up there, faster results at the end of the night. So this, based on some of the data we were able to collect, it will result in getting out our results at the end of the night faster. We are also going to be able to improve the in-precinct voting experience for our voters. So with less polling locations, we have the opportunity to be a little more choosy, and we're able to pick the best polling locations for our voters, so the ones that are the most spacious and have the best room and spots for our polling locations. In addition to that, we're going to be able to staff those polling locations with our most experienced and best election workers, which is really going to help the flow on Election Day. We are also going to be able to offer better customer service in the Clerk's Office on Election Day. As you can imagine, with six less polling locations calling us on Election Day for troubleshooting, we are going to have a little more time to really focus on not just the counter and all the other Election Day things we do, but everything else we do in the Clerk's Office on Election Day. It's not just election stuff, it's also clerk stuff as well. We are also going to have enhanced security, so with twelve precincts, we're going to have a little more oversight, and with that comes more security. Right, moving on to our second proposal. This is our proposal to partner with Oakland County's absentee county board. Now, Michigan election law does allow for combined absentee voter counting boards, and that includes partnering with your county. Oakland County runs a very big program. It includes eighteen other jurisdictions in the county, and we recently met with the Elections Division to talk to them about what it would look like for us to join with them. After talking to them a little bit, we discovered that they were able to take on our volume of ballots, our absentee ballots, and in addition to that, they also maintain a really robust level of security that is in alignment with our own security measures. This includes things like having a confidential route, so it's only spoken verbally, so it can't be FOIA'd or anything like that, the route for picking up the ballots and taking them to the counting place. In addition to that, it's also police escorted, so they have that added level of security. Ballots at the counting place are also kept under twenty-four-seven supervision, and the location itself is monitored twenty-four-seven by Oakland County deputies. And we were very comfortable with that level of security, ourselves being ones for wanting high security here in elections. So after speaking with them, we really felt like this could be, again, a great opportunity for ourselves and our residents, and so we decided to do a little more research into the benefits of this partnership, and again, we found that we are going to see another cost savings. We're looking at about a fifteen percent cost savings in pre-processing costs per election year. We are also going to be seeing a lot more labor efficiency, so what not a lot of people know is that for pre-processing ballots, it really takes an army. So we get a large group of election workers together, and they start processing the ballots. In addition to that, a member of our staff is over there constantly helping the workers to deal with the ballots. If an issue arises, they call the Clerk's Office over here, and then from there, we use the qualified voter file to address any issues and help remedy things. This is a lot, especially- This is a lot, especially in the days leading up to the election. And again, we're not just focusing on election things. We have other things we're doing, like FOIAs and passports and that sort of thing. So we're really focusing a lot on our pre-processing when we have other things that we could be focusing on. So if we move everything to the county, we no longer have to be in there or answering questions because they have access to the Qualified Voter File, and they have the ability to answer any questions that come up. And again, they have the ability to give faster election results. So to elaborate on this just a little bit, we are going to be, if we move forward with this, we would be giving them our absentee ballots that would be received all the way through until Monday at 4:00 p.m. prior to the Election Day, which is a large majority of our absentee ballots. And they'll process those ballots. They also have the ability to post those results at 8:00 on Election Day. And so people who are wondering, oh, I wonder, you know, what's going to come out? Usually, the absentee ballots are the last thing to come out. At this time, they can actually look and see what a majority of the results are while they're waiting for the results from the precincts and that last little chunk of absentee ballots that we'll be processing with a mini absentee voter counting board here on campus. Right, so given the combination of robust security, operational efficiency, and the potential cost savings, we really do feel that consolidating our precincts and joining in a partnership with the absentee voter counting board at the county is going to be a great opportunity for the township. We would really recommend it. So I'd love to open to any questions.
All right, thank you, Katerina. And I understand with early voting and absentee voting really accounts for about 70-some percent of all voters now?
Yes.
So we're seeing 23% show up at the polls, which is much different than what we'd see maybe five or 10 years ago, right? So these are good moves to make, cost-saving moves, but yet still allows people to get out and access their right to vote. Right? Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And I know when you presented to the Election Commission, we were very impressed with the recommendations. Certainly, the efficiency, the cost savings certainly does not result in any voter suppression, but in fact enhances the entire voting experience, as you stated, so that if anything, it's a more secure vote. And I like the fact that when you mentioned that the absentee and early voting would not come out, of course, and any results until after the polls close. So with all that said, I mean, I'm very much in favor of your recommendations, and I think it will make the experience better and certainly more secure for our residents. So thank you.
Yeah, it's a great presentation. I agree with what's been said. And I like the fact that, you know, usually it's the absentee ballots that hold up the final part of the election results, and that they would come out sooner, that it's secure. I know that this was the first time with early voting, and I was up at the library, and it was packed every single time. I thought, oh, I'll just walk up there and take my ballot in, because I had gotten my ballot, not knowing where I would be at on Election Day. And the turnout was phenomenal, I think more than maybe even expected. So it makes total sense that our polling locations are not going to be as busy on Election Day if that many people take advantage of the early voting. So it's a great proposal. Thank you.
Again, great presentation. I appreciate you walking through it. It was obviously very detailed in our packets. We had a chance to go through it. I think it makes a lot of sense. I agree with Trustee Barnett, as well as Murray, on this. I also really appreciate the fact that you guys didn't want to make this change until after you got to see one election cycle and got to see the numbers. So don't make changes, make changes, make purposeful, meaningful change. So this is great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
How often will the absentee ballots be transferred? Is it just after, at 4:00 p.m. on Monday?
There will be two transfers. That's a great question. Thank you. So the first pickup will be on Friday, and then the second pickup will be 4:00 p.m., or Monday, before the election.
And how many individuals from the Clerk's office will be traveling with the ballots?
So we're not required to travel with the ballots, but we can if we want to. So it just depends. But they will be picked up from the Elections Division and then transferred with police escort.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I know from the precincts on Election Day, when the ballots are transferred to the township, there's supposed to be two people. So that's why I was asking.
I'm not, this two-people thing you're talking about? I'm not familiar with that. There is not a two-people requirement. Anybody who's working handling ballots is a sworn elections official that I have administered oath to office to. But it's not always two people that are, you know, at all times, you know, with a ballot.
Okay. So there will be one officer or two officers? Do we know?
There's Oakland County election staff, who are also sworn elections officers, and sheriffs.
Okay. I just prefer to have two people, just from a safety sandpoint.
Thanks for your input.
The other question I have is, how early will they be opening ballots and starting to count?
I believe they'll be starting the processing on, what is it, the Saturday prior to the election, and then they complete their processing on Tuesday.
Okay. And then from a Six Sigma standpoint, if a ballot is mailed in, and the resident who is an actual voter did not mail it in, and they come on Election Day to vote, how is that ballot removed if they start on Saturday? Do we know?
So prior to that ballot being counted, there are a lot of security checks that it goes through. So obviously, signature checking and that sort of thing. I'm assuming that if the voter themselves did not send it in, the signature would not be a match for what was on file. Then we would contact the voter and from there remedy the issue. If it somehow made its way into the absentee voter counting board, I would be remiss. That usually does not happen.
Okay. Just from a process standpoint, because in the automotive industry, sometimes they check every single part, and even again before it goes into vehicle. So I'm just trying to match up what I know from that standpoint. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, if a ballot is counted, a voter does not get a second ballot, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of my concerns. So when we talk about protecting a voter's rights, that's one of the things I don't like about the early absentee.
Yeah, and that's something that would have to go up a level.
Up to the state. You know, you guys don't have the control of it. And I wanted to also, congratulations to Martin on the recognition for the voting. What I'm most reminiscent about is because of the fantastic job that you do here and the residents do for us. I know cost savings are always important, but hopefully, that high level and high standard that we've come to expect from Bloomfield Township will continue forward as Oakland County processes those ballots.
Yeah, thanks for your support. 100%, we would not make a suggestion that wouldn't result in savings and similar or greater efficiencies. We do think that there will be greater efficiencies because what Katerina mentioned with regard to the quality of the facilities, the additional staff we can have on hand. And so we'll be able to process the ballots, you know, efficiently and effectively for those that decide to show up in person on Election Day, and also the other ballots. And it was mentioned, but I want to really highlight the absentee voting counting board process. So the county is doing the early absentee voting counting board. We're doing the absentee voting counting board on Election Day. Since the county is just handling part of it, they can post results immediately after polls close on Election Day. Typically, you know, for us, it takes us, we're not allowed to post until we finish all of the counting, which means we're picking up ballots as late as 8:00 at night. And our results aren't done until 11:00, 1:00. I mean, quite a lot later. So with this process, we would have precinct votes up as soon as, you know, 8:30, 8:45. Almost, you know, 90% of the absentee voting ballots would be up by 8:00. And in all but the closest races, people will know the results hours sooner than they would under the current process. And I, you know, I think that that speed is an important element that is being expected more and more to be faster with the results, continue to be 100% accurate and complete in all the process, but to be faster. So that's one of the great benefits, I think. We'll be back. We're not asking for a vote here. The purpose was a conversation, so thank you for the questions and the points. We'll be back to ask this board to approve the polling locations that have been presented and the contract with Oakland County, that either party can exit with notice. So it's a standard contract as well that others have entered into. And then we'll go back to Election Commission and ask for approval with regard to the boundaries of the new precincts. Statutorily, those are the bodies that are responsible ultimately for those decisions.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you. Thanks for noting on the award that my office received.
It's, when you have such a high level of service, you want it to continue.
Yes.
And you feel comfortable, especially with the residents that are participating, how thorough they are, how thoughtful they are as you go through the line, and they take great care of us. So, and even when I was in the absentee counting room, the residents that are fantastic. So when we have that level of honesty in that room, it gives you greater confidence. So that's what I'll be missing most.
Well, most of those people will actually be in the county, yeah, in the county for early voting, and then on Election Day, and here doing it.
Okay, fantastic.
So they'll end up doing, it'll be many of the same people. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Katerina.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Item number six, presentation discussion of our summer 2025 MetroNet fiber installation in the township presented by Kelly Parker, City Relations Manager, MetroNet. And I believe this is going to be online. Tom, you've got this? Welcome, Kelly. Can you hear us?
I can. Can you all hear me?
Yep, you're on.
Great.
Go right ahead.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, good evening to the Board of Trustees. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'll introduce myself. I'm Kelly Parker. I am the City Relations Manager, and I will be working with the township of Bloomfield during our fiber build-out. And joining me also virtually, I have our project director, Ed Hoffman. So he will be responsible for overseeing the construction project and all aspects of that. So we first wanted to just kind of point out a few things, just give you a little summary of the build that we have planned for Bloomfield, excuse me, for the Bloomfield Township. Construction, we are expecting that to start here pretty soon. So Ed could probably give us a little bit more of a timeframe on when we can expect to see shovels in the ground. But we are expecting that to be taking place here anytime soon between early to midsummer. Project timeline, and this is going to be dependent on permit approvals, but we're thinking this is going to probably be around five to eight months. So it's not going to be a very long construction period there. We are investing $14 million, and that is a private investment by MetroNet. So that is not going to be anything that is going to be funded by the township. We are going to be making that investment into the community. Specific to Bloomfield Hills there, we have that area highlighted for you there. Now, Ed, you might want to set me straight here, but I believe the total 48 LCPs is for the overall project that we're doing, and that does incorporate some other areas outside of the township. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So what you see here, we're going to actually be looking at, from what I can tell from the map, we're probably looking at maybe around eight to 10 LCPs that are specific to the township and then the residents within that area that you see there on the map. And then overall, we're looking at about 2 million feet of fiber that we're going to be installing for the project overall. Now, I wanted to highlight this, because I think this is always one of the things that are of particular interest for city officials, is how are we going to communicate with the residents in the township? So one of the things that we like to do is we like to get a pretty good jumpstart on how we're going to start getting communication out to the residents so that they're aware of what is going to happen, and they can educate themselves on the construction process. So what we're going to start doing, and probably I would say around the time that we start submitting our permits, we're going to start sending out our first notifications, which is going to be a mailed letter. And so for those areas that we're going to start construction, they'll start to receive that letter probably around 30 to 45 days prior to construction beginning. We like to come back probably around seven to 10 days prior to construction starting, and we'll send them a postcard, which you can see there in the upper right-hand corner. Again, the construction postcard is probably the one that's going to catch their attention a little bit more often than the letter. But again, it gives them information on what it's going to have. We've actually updated our correspondence, so there's also an accompanying QR code for them now that they can scan that, and it'll take them to a resource page that we have that can give them some FAQs and answers to some of the commonly asked questions concerning construction. Probably around three to five days before we start actually doing our construction and they start seeing us out there in their neighborhoods, we're going to start putting those nice little yard darts there. So if you've ever had your yard treated, and those little small signs they usually put at the edge of your property around your mailbox, we'll start placing those out into the areas as well. Again, just another friendly reminder of what they can expect there. And then our last piece of communication would be the Real-Electricized signs that you see down there in the bottom right that we'll put at the entrance and the exits of those neighborhoods. So we really like to try to overly communicate with our residents. Again, just because, one, we know that the more educated they are, one, they'll feel more comfortable about our presence, and then, two, that'll also keep down the amount of calls that the city will receive. In that communication that we share with them, we do share with them our construction website, which is a dedicated website where they can put in their information. They can submit questions to us if they have concerns. They can communicate with us that way. And then we also have a dedicated toll-free number that residents can use as well and also use for the purpose of, you know, communication. They have a dog fence, they have sprinklers, a sprinkler system, irrigation system that they want us to be mindful of. Those are the types of requests that they can submit to us, as well as any other kind of questions that they may have there. Moving on to the last, I think this is important for you guys to have. So for the township, again, Ed and I would be your main point of contact there. Now, Ed is going to be your guy for all things construction-related. Ed has been in the game for several decades, so he is an expert at what he does. And he is going to be able to help you out with anything that's related to the construction itself. And then for myself, I kind of primarily focus on the communication piece. So between the township officials and then also your residents, if there are any questions or just sometimes, you know, people just need a little extra TLC and that warm hug, that's kind of what I'm there to do, just to kind of ease any concerns that the township or its residents might have. But moving to that right side there, again, those are the two resources that residents can use. So if you do happen to receive calls or inquiries from residents, we would ask that you would direct them to the construction hub that you see there or the toll-free number. That would be their first point of contact. And then if for some reason they need to have anything escalated, I'm there to assist them with that.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Kelly. Sorry, thank you. Go ahead.
No, no problem. I was just going to say, I'm sure that there are some questions that you all have for us. So if you would like to ask us those questions, Ed and myself would be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation. Will all the construction be, first of all, if you can explain to the residents, will all the construction be below ground as opposed to on any type of poles with wires elevated or cables elevated?
Well, it'll depend on the design, and we submit for permits either aerially and or buried. So whatever the permits dictate will determine where we end up going. I mean, there's a lot of times you have, like, rear lot pole lead, and historically, that's where you want to place your stuff. But we have also gone front lot, and we sometimes are the only ones there because they don't want us on the poles anymore. So we kind of really let the county, the permit, decide where we place. Did that help? Did that answer your question, or?
That helps. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, Kelly, we'll Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, Kelly, we'll also maybe work with you and our communications department to make sure we're getting on our email blast to notify the residents also as much as possible.
Yes. I have actually shared some materials that with the with the city clerk, with the clerk, that I think that would be helpful. I think when we met with them a month or so ago, they mentioned that there is like correspondence that they send out to the residents in the township. And so we're hoping that we can incorporate some inserts into that. And we also provided them with social media posts and different things. But I'll be working with them if there's anything beyond that that they would like to develop, you know, to help with the communications piece. I'll be happy to help along work alongside them with that as well.
Thank you.
I just had a quick thing when I read in the packet. It's a good presentation. But in the resident information and communication, the first thing was a letter to the residents. And it says the letter will come out three to forty-five days before. And I and I guess that you meant thirty to forty-five days, and I believe tonight you said thirty. But if you read the packet without any other information, it seems strange that it might be mailed as late as three to forty-five days. So you have a little typo in there. I think you're just missing a zero.
Yes, ma'am. And that that was me. My apologies.
No.
That was my.
It makes a lot more sense at thirty to forty-five days.
Thank goodness you're back, Phil.
Yeah, I'm the one who always has the annoying catch the little typos. So.
No problem.
No, that's it. Thank you.
So I just want to quickly give a little background to MetroNet. You know, a private company has made this decision to make some investments privately here. We're collaborating and cooperating and trying to make the process as seamless for them and for our residents as possible while protecting everybody's interests here in the township. MetroNet, though, is its own company. We're not here. We're not endorsing them or sponsoring them. You know, this is a business making a decision to invest here to bring additional fiber infrastructure, which will enhance some of the private, like internet access and so forth for many residents who, you know, need those choices. We've had a couple of meetings, so I must say that they've been pretty open with us. Supervisors' Office, the Building Planning, Cable, IT, in my in my office as well, I've had several meetings in preparation for this for MetroNet deciding to make an investment here in the township. And they've been very good. And I appreciate the openness and transparency. I can also mention that just last week, we received our first right-of-way permit request here in the township from you all. So of course, they come to my office, and I think, Kelly, you're mentioning me with my staff member, Shaw Mueller. We, as he indicated, you just mentioned, we do provide notice to people when a right-of-way permit has been has been granted so that this they're not surprised when work starts to happen in their right-of-way. No. So disruption permits usually get a letter, and and we'll work with you all to make sure that people have the appropriate timely notice. And so there, there you go. That's that's an exciting project, and I appreciate all your help and the investment here in the township to bring some greater, you know, business options for for folks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you all. We're looking forward to having a very
All right.
Nice, long, long relationship with you all. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on, item number seven, consider approval of Special Assessment District Number 429 for Bloomfield Village Phase Four amended assessment role presented by Jennifer Worthman, Deputy Assessor. Jennifer, thank you. This is a real easy one, isn't it?
Super fast. Just wanted a little encore performance, as Martin said. I just wanted to bring to your attention, we really didn't have any statutory or procedural requirements that have not been satisfied by our assessment rule. But it was determined when the Treasury Department got ready to send out communication to residents that we inadvertently included a parcel that is on. It is in the village, but it is located on Court and Road, so it's not included in the assessment district. That parcel was left on the assessment roll, and the correct parcel that comes right after that was excluded. So again, like I said, all noticing, all statutory requirements have been met. It was just that final document when we updated the names and addresses to make sure there hadn't been any change in ownership. It just got flip-flopped around. So, you know, for full openness and transparency, I wanted to bring the assessment role back to you guys just to make sure that we got the accurate one approved. So that is in your packet. You can see the previous one, the corrections that were made, and then the corrected assessment role is included as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify, the yellow one was added, and then the red mark out was removed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amended SAD.
Support.
And support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Jennifer. Item number eight, Senior Services Annual Report by our Senior Service Director, Christine Tavara. Did I pronounce that?
Very close.
Okay, correct me.
Tavaro.
Tavaro.
Like tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you very much. So with our mission to serve people fifty, age fifty-plus, the Senior Center has been a hub of activity, wellness, learning, and support. We were able to launch new programs, reopen essential services, and expand transportation, social events, and outreach activities in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The center welcomed forty-one thousand, forty-one five thousand, or forty-one five hundred visits for a diverse range of activities, from fitness and enrichment programs to travel opportunities and support groups. This in it, I'm going to say remarkable engagement, highlights our broad reach. But it's essential to note that we also provide services to individuals in their homes and out in the community. Our statistics for medical transportation, meals on wheels, friendly caller, minor home repair, and chore services are not reflected in that number, the visits to the center, but they are equally important. Some of the highlights for the year, we secured new revenue from grants totaling four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We reopened Friendship Club with a grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Fund at the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan. We launched a chore program to help older adults maintain their yards and driveways with an ARPA grant from the county. We expanded caregiver services, and two of them are called Companion Cafe and Caregiver Connect, and that was funded through Exhale, the Family Caregiver Initiative. We launched a partnership with Silver Sneakers, providing complimentary access to fitness equipment and our walking track for township residents with select Medicare plans. So far, we have two hundred people enrolled, and then we have another fifty who have been enrolled through United Healthcare, which we started a few years ago. We provided thirty-six hundred rides to medical appointments, the center, and for day trips. Our major capital project was the resurfacing of the pool, followed by a conversion to saltwater, improving comfort, maintenance, and reducing costs long term. Grant funds also purchased new fitness equipment to support active aging. We have a stretch cage, a balance testing and training device, and then nine, we replaced nine pneumatic strength machines. We acquired a new Sprinter van with a smart grant, and we served six thousand five hundred meals in various forms to our customers based on their goals. We coordinated sixty-five day trips around Southeast Michigan and held two hundred and nine special events in the center. We were also pleased to host three elections events in twenty twenty-four.
Couldn't do elections without you.
Yeah, thank you. In June of twenty twenty-four, some of you may remember, we celebrated the fifteenth anniversary of the Senior Center. Phew, that's gone fast. And in fact, this year, twenty twenty-five, is the twentieth anniversary of our department joining Bloomfield Township, moving over from the school district. The this list is strong but not comprehensive. Some important services not highlighted in the report are the flu shot clinic, blood pressure, and hearing screenings, a resource fair, as well as safe, as well as safe driving, fraud prevention, and CPR classes. Oh, go to the budget. Thanks, Tom. All right. So Senior Services is a special revenue fund that has a dedicated millage and collects various charges and fees from our customers. We do not receive general funds but are, in fact, a contributor to the general fund through for central services. Each dollar paid in Bloomfield Township, excuse me, property taxes, of each dollar, about a penny comes to Senior Services. That's up from about a half a penny three years ago, and I confirmed it with Jason. We employ operational efficiencies like part-time staff, contract instructors, and organizational partnerships, along with grant development, to maintain a balanced budget. This philosophy also provides for a greater scope and variety of services and programs. And now, moving on to our staff, and I'd like to say thank you to our Deputy Director, Ruth Ferkettich, for being here with me tonight on this late evening. Our team is really excellent. This is my favorite thing to brag about. They are great people dedicated to a welcoming and collaborative environment. From seasoned professionals to passionate new hires, our team's expertise and heart for service are the foundation of our success. We have eight full-time administrators and eighteen part-time staff, and of the part-time staff, seventy-five percent are township residents. So I always love that, and they're out, of course, in the community being great advocates for us. So I love all the data, but behind the numbers are people, volunteers who give their time, caregivers finding moments of respite, members staying active and connected, and a dynamic and supportive staff. It has been a real joy to reflect on the work accomplished and the meaningful impact that Senior Services has had. And though I'm going to be very immodest, I will tell you what I said to the team when we reviewed the final draft. I just like read it and said, "We crushed it!" And everybody laughed. But it is true. I feel like we crushed it. It was a big year. So I'm really grateful for the ongoing support of the board and all Bloomfield Township departments. Just one is here tonight, but they all help us tremendously. And I'm grateful to the community for the support. And I hope this report and presentation inspires people to learn more about Senior Services, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Christine. And I walked through recently and saw the pool.
Mm-hmm.
Looks great. And the new workout equipment, wonderful. And you get a regular crowd in there.
We do.
And I like how you recruit residents to come work for you. That's good. Good work.
Isn't that great? Thank you. They come to us. Oftentimes, they're just participating and then get curious because people are nice to them, and then they want to spend time with us. So.
Yeah, wonderful.
Well, you got a new parking lot, too.
Almost. Almost days away from being complete. And it is, honestly, I've never thought I would say that asphalt was beautiful, but it is.
It is. And also, I mean, to be commended for bringing in additional sources of funding and grants, it's so important. And I hear from so many residents about how much they love the services. If anything, they would just like, maybe a goal for the coming year and years, additional services, increased hours. It is such a valuable service to our residents. And I'm so pleased to see that the Friendship Club is reopened. I know that wasn't your decision to close it, nor was it many of us on this board to close it. So I'm, it's an essential service to have that open. So I'm pleased to see that, and thank you for everything you and your staff do.
Thank you, Neil. Very much.
I I wanted to recognize how you covered the shortfall from even with the grants from your program fees. I think you're over seven hundred thousand. And having that additional, I was wondering if that additional cash flow, is it consistent quarter to quarter, or do you see variations depending on the time of year?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So you've got like the smart transportation revenue, two hundred and thirty thousand. You've got the adult day services, hundred thousand. Meals on Wheels, thirty thousand. All of that contributes to meeting your budget.
Yes.
As Neil pointed out. And I was wondering if those revenues come in consistently every month, or does it vary?
No, it does vary because, for example, the smart dollars that you referenced, those come in after we have spent the money providing the service.
Okay.
And then we submit for reimbursement. So there is a bit of a delay. But again, we've never had a difficulty paying, you know, for any of the services that were invoiced for month to month.
Okay. And I was wondering, on the professional services and IT, I was wondering what additional IT services are covered? Because in the central services fees we do, there is a portion that is allocated for IT.
So that that piece of the pie or of the budget, that includes, we have two software packages that we have subscriptions to, right?
Okay.
And maintenance on. And one of them is a point of sale, and it allows our customers to register for their classes.
Okay.
In advance, and it accepts the charge cards. And so there's charge card processing fees.
Okay.
And then also, there was another piece that I just had, and it slipped out of my mind. But those, yeah, those are not anything that our IT could provide.
Okay.
They're totally separate.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
This was a great presentation. And again, while I appreciate the numbers, I appreciate we talk about the human aspect of your department. Again, the twenty-eight people, the forty-five thousand people that we have in our community, that's what you guys are doing, and that's the service we're providing. So I appreciate you taking the time to humanize it. Because that's the point of this, is providing service to people, not just numbers. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
It's a pleasure. Thank you all.
Okay. All right. Item number nine, consider approval of our Southwest Oakland County Public Works Association Mutual Aid Agreement presented by Noah Malowski, Director of Public Works. Welcome.
Thank you. And good evening. We've been a member of this consortium for a considerable period of time. They just did, for the first time since, I believe, two thousand and eight, they did an update to the legal agreement behind the scenes to modernize it. We had it reviewed by our legal staff, and we recommend that we approve the agreement for the consortium.
Great. Any comments or questions for Noah? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Noah, that was a source, whatever.
Item number ten, consider approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven Marine Patrol Services Agreement with Bloomfield Township presented by Martin Rooker, Township Clerk.
In the packet, behind item ten is the Oakland County Sheriff's Department Agreement. It's a new one, which will be for this year and for three years, three years total, starting this year. There are minor changes, almost really exclusively having to do with the amount of the the cost, which is going up slightly. By recollection is right, I mean, in the contract here, it says a marine deputy with a boat, forty-nine sixty-four. I think presently, it might be forty-four dollars an hour. It's a really great number. Why do we do this? This is a, you know, a service for our lake residents if they choose to pay for it. This does not come out from of township funds. If it does temporarily until we get reimbursed by the HOA. So presently, Upper Long Lake is the only lake that has a marine patrol. And it's unclear as to whether they will continue with this coming year. But in order for that to be an option, the township has to have this agreement with the county. So I recommend we approve this so that the Upper Long Lake or other lakes that would like to engage the marine patrol and to pay for it can contact the clerk's office and make those arrangements. I have no idea why the speakers kind of go off and on occasionally, but that's an issue that cable hopefully is working on, because, I don't know, my mouth is still right here talking to the talking to the microphone. But I know this is for all of us. So I do want to note briefly just a couple of items because the contract has been reviewed by council. Alana Knox did that last week. You know, one item is, for instance, that, you know, if if when the sheriff's deputy is here with his marine patrol and there is an urgent need somewhere else that requires mutual aid, that person may leave to provide that mutual aid. As with all the other mutual aid, that, you know, the originating sort of place pays for that that cost still. And then lastly, of course, if the township for some for some reason decides not to not to pay these small amounts of bills, the county is entitled to set off that, you know, funds from from the township funds to do that. In the prior years, just from memory here, but maybe Tom can correct me, in the prior years, just with Upper Long Lake being the only participant, we've we've been contracting for, you know, a couple hundred dollars a month. It's a very small amount.
That's right.
Ah, thank you.
Nice cameo. That's Tom Hayes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oakland County Sheriff's Office twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven Marine Patrol Services Agreement with the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
Support.
Support. Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Pass is six, nothing. Having said that, I'll move for adjournment.
I move adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.